All right, welcome everyone. Is it Jake or Jack? I knew it was one of those. Thank you for coming. Let's review the agenda. You want to get moved up in the agenda? You're you're pretty high up anyway. But we could put you at the top of Highway. Oh, that's true. That's true. All right, we'll leave it the way it is.
He's second after Peyton Benson.
It's true. It's pretty good. That's true. Any other? You good to go on the agenda?
Yeah.
Minutes from our last meeting?
I'm good with them.
Yeah, I have no comments.
I don't either. Motion to approve. I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second it.
Favor. Aye, aye. Citizens input.
The Timothys parents club is selling raffle tickets for the month of June. You can pick up tickets from any of the parent club members. I am myself one. Or I believe you can probably pick them up at the town office. It's a good way to help support class trips and things for the school.
What are we raffling?
It's a. I think we're raffling cash this year.
Yeah.
Every day. Every day.
Lovely. Anybody else?
Hi all, this is Nancy and could I talk for three minutes if I talk fast?
You have three minutes.
All right, I'm hoping I don't go over. I wanted to, at the last select board meeting. Kevin, you had mentioned that you didn't know that much about what was going on with the equity and inclusion stuff in the state. And I wanted to share that this week, the second week of May, Governor Scott has named it Inclusion Week. And Sherri Johnson and I attended a statewide gathering last night to recognize and celebrate the equity and inclusion efforts being made in Vermont over the past few years. There were speakers from the state, speakers from a few towns. I think it was Milton, Bethel, and Montpelier, and maybe a few others. Along with Bob Harnish and Barbara Noes-Pulling, who along with two others were referred to as the Gang of Four by a number of the people at the meeting. Because they provided a lot of the initial information and energy for the efforts of towns to create declarations of inclusion. Bob Harnish spoke and he thanked a number of organizations that have been instrumental in the effort. And I just wanted to make sure you all knew, I mean, this is pretty extensive. It was the Vermont League of Cities and Towns have been a proponent for years and created a toolkit for towns to use when working on equity and inclusion. The Vermont Chamber of Commerce helped develop the Vermont Declaration of Inclusion website. Governor Scott helped establish the Vermont Office of Racial Equity in 2019 and signed the proclamation of inclusion for the entire state. Bob Harnish also thanked the Social Equity Caucus of the Legislature, the Rutland NAACP office. And he made a special thank you to Select Board Chair Dave Benyon from Franklin, who began this efforts years ago by pointing out that in this time of increasing violence around the country, every town in Vermont must do its part to build community that's open and welcoming and inclusive. Bob Harnish also thanked the Vermont Interfaith Action Group, which is a statewide organization of faith communities who have been working hard around the state creating presentations. And they hosted the gathering last night. And then he also thanked the Ideal Program, which was created by the Vermont Office of Racial Equity. And that is something that Timoth applied for and is a part of now, the Equity and Inclusion Committee, thanks to Meadow. Barbara Noes-Pulling also spoke and shared future plans and hopes for this effort. Peg TV is putting together a video to introduce and explain the Declaration of Inclusion, which will be available for towns and on YouTube at some point. And their hope, the goal is of course that all 240 towns in Vermont will adopt some form of declaration.
All right, Nancy.
Can I keep going for one more minute, please?
Our normal time is three minutes. That's normal, the amount of time that we give people. Except to the, the select board can give somebody more time if they would like.
It's fine.
Jenny, do you feel okay with that? Okay.
Okay, super quick. 110 Vermont towns have approved a statement of inclusion. The governor, the League of Cities and Towns and others agree that it's important for the future of our state. We are the first or second whitest state in the country and we have the lowest birth rate in the country. And so the hope is that every town in the state make the effort to ensure that every person coming into the state, born into the state, is seen, heard, counted, and feels welcome. So the most exciting news is that Timoth was commended along with 21 other towns for our early action on this initiative. And for our early use of Zoom in meetings, because that is an inclusive step. And Timoth will be receiving a welcome mat for the town officer community center, which says, everyone is welcome here. This municipality adopted the Vermont Declaration of Inclusion by May 2023. So very fun. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nancy. All right. Did you have something?
I'd have to have.
Yeah.
One of y'all.
I need a blank. Here.
I think it's a specific signature.
Point 23. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, anything else for citizens input? All right, Public Works Project update. F grants.
The update is to RPSC, the consultant selection committee is going to meet next Wednesday and then report to the meeting on the 23rd.
Perfect.
And I have your package for that before you go.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm not going to give them to you now.
All right, Highway, Eric.
You're being waved that.
Oh.
You can have one. Wow. Thank you. You're welcome.
Hey folks, can I ask, the fellow on the telephone is still seems to be on. We're hearing an awful lot of feedback.
He's going to be out. He's going to be out as soon as we open these bids.
I think there's, everyone seems to be unmuted.
He might have to go for a different screen to do it. I don't know.
He's only here for this, Tim.
I'm just listening. I can hear you guys.
Yeah, we're talking about you.
That's not unusual.
Are you guys, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
What's your magic number?
Well. This is from well paving. The total bid is $86,877.24. 24 cents.
And what's a ton is it?
Per ton? 78,34 cents.
$78.
Sorry, yep. It's been a long day.
8,000.
You know. Words.
And so did they bid a separate amount for the children?
Yeah. It's per mile, or no, sorry. Good fair.
There should be something on there for sure.
Yeah, it's 1,800 a day, it looks like. We don't have it. Well, I guess it's an option of unit of day. $1,800.
The units were days, the units were days.
Yeah, the units are days.
So that's like and their paving is unit price of 86.52. Paving total is 93,960.72. The shoulder work is 6,625. The total of 100,000
What was their shouldering rate?
Shouldering is 26.50.
Okay.
$26.50. Total is 6,625 hours total.
All right, I had Fuller Sand and Gravel. Their by Timoth complete payment is $80 per ton for a total of $86,888. Their shouldering is one quarter. I'm not sure if it's day or two big years. If it's day, it's okay, it's just a dollar. It just, and it's $250 for a grand total of $87,130.
One second, Gil. Is the town office muted? The town office need to be muted?
Is that the owl?
Is that the owl? I don't know. No, the owl is up there where we are. If you can just mute everyone except the people who are on there for paving. That might help. I think the town office might have been the one that was there.
What was your total, Judy?
87,130. We're 86 and you were 78. Oh. And then the, we wanted to know the percent of the recycled. So this one is 0% recycled. This one is, so Wilkes 15%, Vtrans approved mix.
Fikes 15%.
15%. These two are 15%. Yours is 87,000 with 0%.
And so Eric can explain what that all means. Not sure if I can, but why we put it on the bid. Some of the, Tom's is a virgin, Fuller's is a virgin mix. And the recycled asphalt, the rap is recycled asphalt product. So it seems from what I've seen in town, it seems to crack quicker. And I'm sure that's up for debate all over the world, but I think we have we seem to have better longevity out of Fuller's. Heard it next.
The difference between.
Wave that. Calculations.
So, did you want us, did we want to give the?
Yeah, who is?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add that the use of recycled asphalt is, is an industry standard. You know, some, some people don't use it, some, some do, but you know, it's considered an inner waste product, but we recycle it 15% and we have a AOT approved mixes. We have a history with the mix with district leveling projects and so forth. And you know, Vtrans utilizes it on, or accepts it on almost all their projects. And we have a laboratory technician that also tests the quality of the mix. So we've, we've used it in many towns, many many like state projects and district leveling projects.
Do you have any insight into the recycled or?
I think it works great as shoulder material. I'm not so, I'm not much of a paving expert, but it does seem to hold up well in shoulders. You waste it that way.
The $252.76 difference between the two. Eric, do you have a input on this? Not a big difference.
What's the, that's with shouldering and everything?
Yeah. If you want to come and look at the bids, you can come and look at them and confirm that we're all looking at the same.
With the recycled asphalt, being Vtrans approved and stuff, the performance should be equivalent to other mixes. The total asphalt content is give or ten, give or take a tenth or so is probably the same. As, as a, it's a, the virgin and the, the total asphalt between the virgin and the rap mix is equivalent. It's only some of the recycled asphalt that's crushed and graded to size and tested makes up a little bit of difference to achieve the total asphalt content.
That's been just a dollar. Actually, he did. He usually just bids $1. That's why I said it's just a dollar. Right, it was $130.
This is who we used last year and you felt comfortable with them. How do you feel, Kevin?
They're thinking it lasts longer. I'm fine with that too.
If they were further apart in price, I think it would be harder decision. $250 doesn't feel like you know, for a
I mean, it's, I mean, I know it's our decision, but it's kind of if you guess.
All right. All right, do I hear a motion to accept? All right. So, Tim, I think unfortunately, we're going to go with bid from Fuller's. Sand and gravel. They were pretty close to you in numbers. So can I have a motion to accept that bid?
I'll make a motion to accept Fuller's bid.
I'll second it. All in favor? All right. Done and done. Thank you for coming. Sorry, didn't
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry that, you know, Vtrans approved product wasn't, wasn't up to your guys' standards, but all is fair. Bidding is bidding.
He's bidding. All right.
You were low. Okay, thanks. Have a good night.
Yep, you as well. Yeah, you're up. Just, no.
Remember, you can always approve a bid that's in the best interest of the town. You don't always have to take the lowest bid. You can take a bid that's in the best interest of town.
Well, yeah, and I think with him working with them, you've worked with them a lot, quite a bit, so.
Well, I want to say they paved over in Dampy on, on one of the bridges that they did, so and I know he had his own pit, but that was a few years ago, so I'm not sure. Well, I think he's done Vermont mix before, but.
Yeah, this is just doesn't have any recycled asphalt product. He crushes it, uses it for shoulder material.
Yeah.
And what I've seen in our town, like use the rap. And it did not, has not held on. How much they used is up for debate.
Yeah. All right.
It might not have met the six standard back then. Now they're done.
It might be different. All right.
Okay, so. I'd like to see if we can drive away from it.
Yes, thank you for taking these pictures. They're very helpful.
Did you, did you time that vehicle?
Seeing a car coming.
So we have a different point of view now, of course, at the driveways and then using it a little bit. And so our line of sight looking left towards that large tree. We actually had to cut back the tree line going.
And I see you clean that out.
On the road and we, we said do more. Originally, the tree was a concern for alignment site. And I think now a different point of view, my opinion has changed.
So I did go over there prior to the meeting and parked in your driveway and looked at it. And it just happened, the truck was coming when I was sitting there. I, I ain't, I'm fine with it. Being the way it is.
You mean, you're fine with the permit being the way it is? You're fine with amending?
I'm fine with amending the permit to leave that tree. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I mean Eric, you are the dispatcher of these. All right. So we need to make a motion to amend this driveway permit to allow this, what is this? Now, what a name.
You have to save it for the name of all.
Can you say that? What is the first part of that? Bomb of, bomb of Gilead tree. I will make that.
Spiking splint in that tree.
One question. Okay, um, when they get leaked out a bit more, that these saplings, do you have any concerns about your line of sight then? Or, I mean, cut the saplings?
Yeah, we can cut the saplings. We trimmed back when foliage was out. We can do more, but we're, at the time, we're pretty happy. We're not using it daily, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you said.
It's leased out pretty decent right now. Yeah, no, you can see by it really pretty decent. I can see that truck coming out of it.
That's great.
So.
All right, I think
Do we need a motion or anything?
Yeah, we do. We need to make a motion to amend.
Make a motion, we amend to keep the bomb of Gilead.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
You don't want to stay?
More fun than you think.
All right. Yeah, Eric.
Okay, so we've been grading and gravel. We're both to be unfinished with grading. We've been good for ride on. Everything's looking pretty good. We got a couple of piles here and there to fill, but we're getting ready to do some ditching on the 140 before we pave. We're going to cut some brush by Young's barn after the hill and then I'm gonna try and dig that ditch. There's a bit of a, there's a bit of a washout. Actually, there's two washouts right there by Young's barn. And so we put some stone in there. And as I was doing it, I was like, you know, it wouldn't hurt to dig this all out and still line that whole thing. So we'll get, there's a call, there's somewhere to do down there anyway, before we get paid. So while we got the grader there, we'll spend some time, or the excavator down there. I got the lights back. We're working on a little area for those lights, so we don't have to drive trailer and out behind us. So we got that almost done today.
Just, so Judy knows, we have traffic lights. That's what you're talking about, those lights?
Yeah, yeah.
These traffic lights, it's to stop somebody. Okay, so the automatic flaggers, so they're mechanical flaggers.
And people, people hate them a lot less than they do flaggers. I don't know why, but they smile when they drive by. So.
Well, sometimes they're probably less confusing.
Yeah, yeah. They seem to work pretty well. Um, let's see. We got that. Still working on the stairs, handrail. The stairs are there. Handrails partly done. It's not finished. Still working on the airlines in the shop. That's partly done, not finished. I guess that's about it.
How did your open house go?
It seemed to go all right. I mean, we had, it was a not real busy, but we had quite a few people come in and sit in excavators or sit in bucket loaders and check everything out. So it seemed like.
My kids had a great time.
That's, that's about all I got. We get to the greater. Thing.
Great. Questions? All right, Gulf Road trash update?
So we were in real one morning and we, Michael Bannon's and Burks. There was a one ton load of trash in the ditch.
My goodness.
Yeah, it was awesome. It was blatantly obvious that someone just pulled up there and threw it out of their truck. Justin came.
The Brooklyn County Deputy Sheriff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, our sheriff guy came and checked it out. Find a name, found a name, went knocked on the door, handed him a ticket. I don't know for how much. We get some of it back, I guess, is what he said. But I guess, he gave us his info and the town can actually send him a bill if he would like to. Not that it's going to get paid, but I guess it's up to the select board if they want to. Gil has the information for the gentleman. Said he was cleaning out his mother's house and had a truckload and
decided to.
Decided that the side of the building was the best place for it.
So he would send.
Other way to Hubbard's.
We would send them a bill to bill them for your time.
Yeah.
And what it costs to get rid of.
Yeah.
It probably wasn't a ton, but that's probably what I charged.
Yeah.
That was flat rate, but I don't think we've ever done it before, but it'll depend up to you guys if you want to. If you want to go down that road or not, I mean, it's all.
How much time did it take you?
They had an hour in it by the time I was done screwing around.
Was it just you and, just you or you and Ronnie? Just you?
How often has this happened before? Has it?
It's happened one other time I can think of. But those peoples were told they were going to get a ticket. They didn't clean up the mess they made and went and cleaned it up. What I heard.
Yes, that's what the deputy sheriff testified to was.
Yeah.
He said, but I can write you a ticket or two, come cleaning this up. And they said, well, we told somebody, we paid somebody to take care of it. He says, it's still your trash. You want to pay the fine or you want to pick it up? And so they chose to pick it up. Also on the Gulf.
It was blatantly obvious. It was like ridiculous. So, I mean, I think, yeah, at least give a letter.
Yeah.
At the very least, but I think there's going to be something in it that says you know, was was it a resident?
I'm, I don't think we should hit him heavy. I think you should pay something for it though. He's got an hour into it and some of our equipment and getting rid of it. Was it to get rid of it?
Well, that I was hoping if, if we did do something like that, it would be a deterrent for other.
Yeah.
I don't know about here, but where I work, people are dumping their trash in our trash bins all the time. Yeah, so.
Do you have that number? It was a truckload, so.
It was a truckload.
100 bucks.
Probably 120 bucks.
Yeah. Yeah.
You took it to Hubbard's, right? Or you drive to ours? Okay. Okay. Um. Yeah. What was it to get rid of it?
Well, we don't know. He was just saying, he was saying.
Like 150-ish bucks.
Dump truck, I usually get 2.2.
Right.
Pickup truck is 10 punches, but the dump truck is supposed to.
Yeah, 150.
Well, I don't know. I can't say I've never taken trash before, so.
And that includes your time? Okay, and we need to have some kind of short letter that goes along with this that just says what it's for. You know, this is a bill for the time it took our
time and disposal. Yeah.
You're probably never going to get.
I mean, it does get the precedent of. Don't leave.
Instead of mail, maybe we should hand deliver it to them.
Well, I'm walking down roads everywhere.
Yeah, you have all the information. Does that feel like enough guidance to write a letter?
The deputy sheriff gave us the copy of the ticket, your guys' names and address.
Okay.
Perfect.
So it sounds like a plan. Do we feel like we need to make a motion on that or just agree on consensus that that's actual?
I think agreeing on it's fine.
Used greater purchase authorization. Do we have one in mind?
So we, there. So we, there. There is a state auction tomorrow. They have a greater there, but I. After searching around, I actually got some information, I didn't even give you a number at all. But it's actually like three years newer than ours, so I. I don't think it's worth. But, uh, if we could get approval from the select board to. Start looking, I guess, per our. Policy. I don't know. I mean, I think we have seventy-five thousand budgeted. But I think that's the, one of the XXXs. To go look at, maybe I'll steal Kevin and.
Yeah, we have that policy.
Policy requires you to do a little more homework than just asking them not to spend more than. This was in your, your email, and I just don't know what this means, but that's the policy that you approved.
I really didn't edit it all that much, I just rearranged.
This says, you know, Eric is supposed to come up with that, what he wants and. He can research it and come back and say, alright.
Does AMP mean anything to you? Think it's, I'd thought of it at some point, so on.
And I looked, I went back to your original email and that's.
Oh, I'm sure.
In the email, so. Is this supposed to be an apostrophe or, or the um, ampersand sign? Well, there is an ampersand there, so site. Auction sites and something.
An ampersand anywhere else, that's just funny, I think it's just. Gobbledygook. So, road commission.
Craigslist or, you know, Facebook.
Right.
Marketplace.
Marketplace or something, I don't know if that.
Well, like, I have.
Internet.
A site that I belong, yeah, just do, I would just do internet, cuz. I have a site that I belong to called Richie Brothers and they only do heavy equipment. And they're. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of them.
So. Or amending the procurement guidelines. What, what, what were the words that were just said?
Internet.
Internet sites.
Yeah, I mean, internet.
Yeah.
Right.
My question is. I know it's on the schedule to replace it. How badly do we need to replace it?
I was.
Can we get a few more years out of it, or?
Well, that kind of ties into my question, remind me when our fiscal year ends, is it?
There's only like forty-one thousand dollars.
We're, we're in the negative already, so.
But we get more once the. You put the fund with the separate. Fund every year. And we've had this kind of this, when we buy. So there's another seventy-five thousand going in it in next fiscal year, right now, there's only, what I tell you the other day, forty-one. So we don't actually have money enough in it to buy it.
So in the next fiscal year.
This would be a good. Uh, exercise to go through this. This thing and see how it works, and if it doesn't work, then you might wanna amend the. The guidelines a little more.
If we did find something, we can borrow. Artful funds, correct?
We haven't agreed to do that yet.
Our, our funds, we'd have to borrow from the general fund. And the art of funds can be used as a bank, but.
Right, and I think that, um. I thought we were looking to purchase this after, I actually misunderstood, I thought we were planning to purchase this. In the next fiscal year, like to have it in the fall of next year, is that correct, or? Were you hoping it sooner than that?
Schedule was in twenty-four, he thought if it came up and it was good.
Be able to look for something, yeah.
So. I mean. I, I don't know, if a deal pops up on one that is. Like. Unbelievable, ass up, I don't, I don't know.
Fast equipment is moving right now?
If you read the guidelines, Eric is supposed to come up with what he wants. And comes to the select board and say, this is what we, it's gonna cost between this and this, this is what I need, this is what I'm gonna go look for. Policy, you're just to say, you know, well, tell me I can't spend more than this, that's, that's not what the guideline says, so if you're gonna do it that way. Then the guidelines need to be changed.
So something that Judy said about um, the longevity of the grader, and I do know that there are services where. Um, a technician will go out and they will go through a piece of heavy equipment. And I, I would suggest, or I would hope that the select board would think about having, if you're going to buy a piece of used equipment. Um, find one of those, find a service that would go out and go through, I mean, they go, they check all the fluids. They go through all of the internals, they do a very um. In-depth diagnostic review of that piece of equipment, and I was, I thought about it actually, like, maybe you should do that on this grader and get a. You know, a technical assessment of the longevity of this piece of equipment, because it might be that. If it lasts a couple more years, it may be worth keeping it around a little bit longer. Um, but if you're gonna go spend seventy-five thousand dollars on a used piece of equipment, you know, the. I think the chipper is a good example of, you know, maybe having a, not just a, a second set, but a third set of eyes that. Is gonna go through there and with that, paying for that service of that fine tooth comb really dialing in, like. You know, because there might be something that, you know, it looks good, it runs good, it sounds good for the most part, but you just don't know. And I, I do know that there are services out there that.
Basically like a annual inspection for your car.
Right, but I think if you're looking for a piece of equipment, you know, you, you hire this, this company or a someone, I, you know, you guys would know more than me.
Young's used to do it, but I don't think they do it anymore, cuz they're not in business anymore.
But there must, I mean, I'm sure that there's someone else that does that.
Would also be if we were going to resell the grader, we could get the value of.
You would have that documentation of saying that, you know.
Yeah. It's worth this much to resell it at, that amount, whether we wanna know that number.
No, but then, I mean, but then you could say, you know, if someone asks, you know, then you have, you can say that, you know, it has so many hours, the town has had it so long. And it has been assessed through this, you know. Company or dealership or whatever as a, you know.
Right. When it comes to actually talking about the used greater purchase authorization. I'm trying to think of what. Steps we need to take right now about this, um.
I'm assuming we just need Eric to do some due diligence and then we put that to it.
Well, I think basically, just replacing one.
Right.
It's the same thing we have, so until you find. If you want something more than that from me, tell me, you know.
Yeah.
Put that down, but.
Are you looking for one slightly bigger? Okay. My brothers were worried.
At least, at least. At least ten years newer. I'd really like to get into the two thousands.
Yeah, and I'd like to see one with a wing on it, which ours has.
And how much did it cost to replace that tire?
So, twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred for the rim, yeah, and there's another one in the pipeline in there.
Okay.
And that's number four. So. I've got a couple of pistons that need to be rebuilt sooner than later if we're gonna keep it.
Yep.
And I was told that if those are running, they're worth money. But if they are not running, they are a boat acre, cuz they're really hard to get parts for.
This brand, this champ, yeah, champion is. And that's a. I really would like to find a cat or a John Deere or something that's. A name, a name brand that parts aren't just full.
So again, just coming, right, coming back to the. What we need to do right now in order to move forward with. I don't think we're in a position to purchase one before the next fiscal year, am I correct, so. Certainly look, but then, you know, currently it is budgeted for. Twenty twenty-four, so.
This is what. Would currently, there's what, forty-one thousand in there? And there'll be another seventy-five added to it?
Once taxes come in in August, yeah.
I mean, so you have. So you won't be confined to. A small amount, I mean, obviously don't spend it all, I mean, you have.
I think for the purpose of this meeting, it was just whether or not we were going to buy one ahead of the schedule, which is.
Right.
Not what I think we wanna do as a selected. Um, if you find one that we can buy, when we actually have the money in our accounts, that's.
Yeah, so are they turning around quickly for selling?
I don't really know, they're not, new ones are not showing up.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I just didn't know if they were there for like a month or only a week, or if they were hanging out for three months.
There's nothing, it's a, I call cat, or, or cat salesman, and he. They go pretty quick.
Okay.
So.
New units.
No, used ones.
Used unit.
Yeah, he said I had one here, but now it's not here anymore.
Let's hope they just keep coming in and going out, and then more come in.
I noticed bucket loaders don't sit on marketplace very long. Even junk.
Alright, so we can have this on the agenda again in.
The part of the purpose of this. Guidance.
Yeah.
Is so that he can be ready.
Right.
To purchase something, but he's supposed to say, this is what I want, he can say, I want a cat or a Volvo or something, this is the size. I want it with a wing, you know, those are the parameters.
Right.
And then you can say, okay, you can go get a grader. As long as you don't exceed X hundred dollars.
So we do have, so.
Not just saying, we gotta replace the existing thing, because he just said he didn't want a champion, so.
So all we. So what we need, thank you, Gil, I'm reading. I get what you're saying now, so what we need to do is, if you can. Give us the specifications of what it is, so ten years newer.
At least.
What other specifications has a wing on it?
Eric needs to come up with that for you. Are we looking at how many hours it has on it, or do we care about that? Hours, how many hours it's been run?
So if you.
Wanted to write that up.
Wanted to write that up, and then we can approve it at either our next meeting. Or the one in June. Perfect. It is all in, yeah, just the, the specifications that you're looking for.
I would think.
And then we just have to, when we make the motion, say where the funding will be coming from.
I mean, if we keep building out this list for different equipment, I would almost think we could add this to this guideline too, when you're replacing this, this is what we're looking for.
Right, and then it makes it easier just to have a template of here are the lines to fill in, or when. You wanna come to the board. Alright. That make sense to everybody? We feel good about that, Eric, Gil? Okay, roadside mowing.
This is on here, just we have a discussion, giving our doctor in a couple of weeks ago and wanted to know. He said he's working on his summer schedule and wanted them to do it again. And I said, if it goes over ten thousand, we have to go up to bid, and I'll make sure it's under ten thousand, um. Can check with the road commissioner and find out what kind of job they did last year, if he's happy to do that, or.
I told him the same thing, if it was under ten thousand.
And it's worth it for.
But is that, so, alright, so under ten grand, so say that nine, 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 whatever. Is that? Is that fair? I mean, is, say is it, whatever, say is it eight grand, eighty-five hundred nine, where is it? Fair? Should we change the guidelines of it going forward? Change the amount of it? To have it specifically for going out to bid. I mean, obviously can't do it now, we'll let him do it this year, but going forward. Is what he, is that a fair number, is that? What did he charge last year? About ten grand?
It's all hours.
No, I know, I know it is.
Spend more time out there, if you wanna do. So. I mean, I guess it's just up to our. Budget numbers, you know, I mean.
And, and part of the reason for the increase between Paulus and Dan was Paulus charged sixty-five dollars. And Dan charges a hundred.
Right.
So right there, there's, there's an increase in.
I'm just wondering, and we don't obviously have to, I'm just wondering if going forward, if we want to change. The amount that we. Put out to bid so that. Other people get an opportunity to bid on doing it going forward.
You can go out to bid.
I thought ten.
Amount if you want to, but if it's over ten thousand, then you have to.
We're required to.
Right.
If you wanted to see if there's anybody else in town that wanted to do it, you just come up with the RFP saying, this many trips around town. You know, blah, 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 whatever it is that. What you want somebody to do.
Right, not that I wanna cut Dan out of it. I was saying, but there's somebody out there that has the exact same equipment and they're gonna run around town for seven grand. So I'm, I was just wondering if going forward, if we should do something like that.
So do you wanna lower the threshold, like nine thousand, or just open it up?
No, just over it up to other people.
Specifically for the roadside mowing.
Right.
Yes, means it's fair.
We have our RFP for the money, so if you want that out there, yeah.
You could try it for a year or two, and if Dan is the only one that shows up.
Exactly, yeah. So. It's too late to do it this year, though, is.
It used to be that the first of one was done before the, in the June, so that the. It's but before it goes to see.
We should look, I think it's supposed to be.
But how much time do we need to get people to bid, normally it's.
Thirty days. So, I mean, yeah, yeah, I think we. Have enough time.
Well. The only concern I have is that. If. We don't have anyone, if Allard. Is the only person who wants to do it, and we're so close to the. Need of having it mowed, if this is something we need to tell Allard the plan for next year, is this is going to be coming out to bid. I don't know timeline wise.
Uh, I mean, would we put few dates in it to say you need to have this much mode by this date, or would we just say we want you to go around town three times? Or, or whatever it is.
It is twice.
Yeah, there's a.
Second time is just one loop, the first time is they make a couple of passes, I think. I was just thinking, if we really need them to go around by such and such a date, then we would probably wanna put that in there, just so they understand our.
Right, begin day and day, yeah.
Paulus made some pretty solid guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we are gonna do it this year, are we cutting it too close to getting the information out there to people and?
Potentially upsetting the only person we have currently.
I mean, in a couple of days, it's gonna be the fifteenth, could we even turn around that clock again?
I would personally feel more comfortable.
Utilizing Dan this year and going.
And informing him now that we are going to make this a bitted. Thing next year. Feel.
Mm-hmm, comfortable, yeah, okay.
So we're going to plan to utilize Allard this year.
Yeah.
And we can inform him.
And then do that. Before, I mean, I just, I know there's other people that have that stuff and.
No, I think it's. Fine ideas.
You may find somebody foolish enough to do it for five grand.
Maybe only once, though. Alright, um. Anything else, Eric, for highway?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay. Financial. Reports. We had a couple of questions for you, Eric, before you left. For the highway, so we're still in the black technically for twenty-three thousand, correct, or twenty, not twenty-three thou, cuz. If we get reimbursed for paving, is that?
Yeah, seventy five thousand.
Right, so we'll have about, we're, we still have roughly twenty three thousand left. However, there are some items that we were going to move money around for gravel and stone.
Yep.
But I don't remember what line item that was.
We told her consult.
From salt.
Yeah. Right, so the salt budget will still say forty five.
Okay.
And the gravel budget can still say seventeen, but it'll show how much gravel we actually spent.
Right.
So when it comes budget time.
Yeah.
You know how much, rather than.
That makes sense.
You should be looking. We just won't set, spend any more on the salt.
Okay.
That's how that works.
So the winter, the winter salt's still going to be forty five?
Right, it's just, you know, budgeting.
Right.
But it was twenty seven, so we've got. Seventeen.
Right.
Extra that you can spend.
About how much a ton do we pay for that?
Like ninety.
Okay.
Pretty around ninety.
So I think that's about what the state was saying too.
It was supposed to be more, but that's what we got built and we were told to pay what we got built.
And then when it comes to, like, so we have the ten thousand in the highway improvement projects. Is that going to cover the? Differences of the, some of these items that are. In the. Negative here? Like the. The repairs, maintenance and parts. Um, is. Over thirty six hundred. Um, or. Yeah. I'm just trying to understand like how we're gonna, I mean, it's helpful to know.
Right, we need, we kind of need one of these as.
Assumed future state?
So there is a Google on here, I just see right now, this twenty one thousand for tools. Eighteen five of that is up here for the.
Hmm.
Oh, that's supposed to be, it's supposed to say chipper up there, but. That got moved down there. So we spent eighteen five on the chipper, but. On the other report from the computer, it shows up down here. So of this, you know, there's.
Oh, okay.
There's still, this is eighteen over.
Okay.
Because it's in two, it's in two places.
Oh, because it got added in.
It's in two places, yeah.
It makes that number a little better.
Yeah.
Okay. That'll get us to the end of June.
Right.
Okay.
Plus we've got our. Is that where the reimbursement from the town garage street?
The town garage, right, that's a decision the board's going to have to make it is June meeting whether you're going to take the money from. The capital fund and reimburse, it's up to sixty thousand or something, I think. Right now. You're going to reimburse the highway or you're going to leave the money in the capital fund, we can.
Yep.
That'll, that'll be a discussion on the.
The June meeting.
June meeting, because you have to decide before the end of the year.
That just makes me feel better, knowing that that's the number. Okay.
Um. Plus, we're going to get reimbursed for Potter's Book, Book Project Two, I think we're supposed to get thirty six thousand for that, so. You're going to be.
I keep forgetting about that.
Yeah.
We're going to be in those, the black.
Okay.
It just looks that way as.
I knew we were, I knew that we were going to be. Okay, except then when I did this math, it was twenty three thousand. I was like, that's actually. Cutting it pretty close and then. Now this all makes me feel better, so, perfect. Um, does anybody else have any questions? When is that Potter's Brook supposed to be? Coming in?
It depends when the state gets around to bring it. Sometimes they turn it around quick and sometimes.
We got, should I have split seven coming back from? General project, do we?
Yes, we've got sixty seven from the. Grant and AIDS for the channel.
Oh, great.
And we've got ten thousand dollar grant initially, but we haven't spent it yet, but hopefully we're going to do it for the end of June.
Okay. Great.
That one, that one has to be done by the end of June, then it changes. Well, it's our fiscal year, but it's, it's a fiscal year. Thing, you can do them both next year or during the summer. Guess we'll see what they do. I'll have, I'll have to check with Stephanie to see what the. Or the guy, the guy that I send the. Letter and chapter to see when we have to have it finished. I thought they changed those, I think that's, I thought they slid them until October. I thought that.
It would be good to know.
They did it two years ago, they did it that way and then depending on the buck.
Yeah.
You know, to get everything branded into. Before. Because you're grading and you're doing all the other stuff too, we're lucky because we. Got on the rating early this year, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And. On the. Fee to, what was, this was just the legal fees, we're just confirming that that, we did that at our last meeting, so that'll. Thanks, Ray.
Right, the legal fee sixteen five is going to actually be.
Covered by Arthur.
Yeah.
And then the solid waste and then this disposal and. Calling. Um. Is this something that? Are we throwing away more trash or is it just more expensive?
It's more expensive, they up the rate and they up the. Power.
Okay.
They forget double meaning.
Yeah.
For both recycling and.
Yeah.
Yeah, the recycling doesn't go anywhere.
Recycling, it costs us. I think two forty. Two seventy for them to haul the bin from here to Rutland and the. The fee is only. Hundred something dollars a ton.
Yeah.
We get about a ton of recycling in them.
Oh, wow.
And the trash, which is six or seven tons, gets held for. You know, a hundred, two hundred dollars all the way to Hudson Falls. Covered to all the trash. Sales house, the recycling.
Because it's Casellas.
Hmm. So is it something we need to change? Like, do we need to make any adjustments based on? Like.
No, they'll, they'll be more than that.
Okay. Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions otherwise?
No.
Um. More in some orders? Going through all those. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Concerns?
Uh. No, I'm good.
All right. We need to make a motion to. Approve. More in orders.
I make the motion that we include the warrants and orders.
I will second it on favor. Hi. Great. Now we're going to review the debit card guidelines.
I read it over earlier and didn't see any issue.
Yeah, great. The only thing was we added that little line.
We took that extension and we added that last one.
Looks great. Did we already approve it? We approved it based on those and this is.
To give me those suggestions and said.
Now we're going to.
Bring it back, miss.
All right.
And we'll make a motion, we approve the debit card policy and procedures.
Let's talk to them.
All in favor?
Alright.
Lovely. Um, old business, our list review. Um.
So I was thinking of it a little bit.
Yep.
Boom.
Just go. Um. They pick out the following three fire departments given here, that's the little asterisk there.
Right.
Moved down so they wanted the money. Sort of generating.
Yep.
But some of the food and some of what was spent, the fire department spent sixty four, sixty five.
Some of these we are working on, like the. The power. And generator.
Right. And once we get the. That work done. Then we will move.
Yeah, we can.
We've approved sit spending ninety five hundred for the town, under the town and under the fall, fire departments.
Yeah. Michael.
It's a thirty eight thousand dollar rule.
Right. Right.
So the, um, the old creamery is really looking to get a line connected from. This building to the old creamery. And. We have a limited amount of funds and we were really hoping that the ARPA, some of the ARPA money while you're doing that. I know there's a generator grant, but we would really appreciate, you know, making sure that the old creamery wasn't forgotten, because then it, that was. Tied into a grant or something else, then we could use some of our other money for, you know. Other aspects of the building that need to be dealt with.
Who's still going to get power run to it?
On here, we have sixty eight hundred dollars if the old premier committee has requested for the power. And they also requested ten thousand for. Some of the other stuff that's going to happen there.
We're trying to.
The storage room and. And it's going to get painted before.
Yeah, yes, yes, it will. We get the lift, I'm good to go.
Okay. Just.
Gentle reminder.
It is, I mean, it is technically a town building and a lot of, a lot of volunteer effort and a lot of donations have gone into making it what it is, so. If we can get power there, that allows the committee to really branch out and go into, like, we want to have a finished space in that room. For. Essentially like storage and pizza oven, but right now we need to have. Running extent, I mean, nobody wants to run extension cords from one building, because if they trip a breaker or this and that, it just becomes.
Oh, yeah.
So I just, I just. I'm lobbying hard not to.
Oh, yeah. I think it's a. Very useful and valuable.
So sixteen eight.
Yeah.
For the.
And we did get a full list of the, what those upgrade requests were with the initial, um. I don't know if you wanted an opportunity to review them, there was, um. Um. I can't remember them all on the top of my head, but there is a packet somewhere that has all the. Detailed information for all of these, yeah. If you wanted to send it to Judy, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Um. Because it, it goes into significant detail. They did a great job, they all did a really great job and. And in detailing the needs that they all had, um. But yeah, definitely, I think that, um. In terms of the power.
You're, you're right.
We're, we're already doing it, right, so.
So if that can just ma- make sure that it doesn't get forgotten to just. Make sure the electrician knows to, you know, hey, you want a sub panel over here, buried into the ground.
Yeah.
Yada, yada.
And I think that's included, it's included in at least one of the electricians. Well, I think maybe the second one was still, but we got from Stubbs and from that one.
Okay, great. Do you both feel that making sure the power is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, let's really make sure that that.
Yep.
Happens. Great.
Especially if it's going to get. Probably you, hopefully utilized.
Well, nearly all entirely grant funded, so why not?
Right.
Um.
No, the work on the old creamery has mostly been by donations.
Right.
I meant like the, um, the, like, the, the power and the improvements will be.
Brand.
Brand or ARPA funding.
Right.
Like making that step.
Forty thousand that's been spent.
Oh, yeah.
Was done mostly by donation.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think of that forty thousand, it was less than four thousand this town.
Wow.
The rest of it. Great.
Yeah.
Thanks to Grant and Stan and.
Yeah, there, there are people that put in a lot.
Here, here.
You got.
They donated a lot of money to make sure that that building doesn't fall down.
Yeah.
Or get burned up.
Yeah, let's continue that effort.
We got fourteen.
Any other comments on the ARPA list?
Um, so.
Partly waiting to find out about the. The grant we're still waiting to hear back on, but what were you going to say?
So, like, Gail was saying before, the SCBA gear is no longer an issue for us.
Right.
Um, the maintenance on the building is though.
Okay. And that's the roof insulation?
Yep, um, and. Um. We're going to add to that.
Okay.
We're going to add, yeah.
Well, if you wanted to come back with that more like.
Um.
Detailed. If there was more to add, I know you've already done the really detailed.
Um, well, I think it, I, I quite honestly, I think that structurally feasible line and we cover it.
Okay. To be, to, you're going to come back to us about that. All right, any other? Judy, do you have anything on this list that you're?
Not about, not at this point, okay.
Great. And we get to go on, Gail, did you have anything else for the ARPA list before we move on? Okay. Stuff to do. Oh, we'll let Eric go before we went over this. Okay, well, maybe we'll do the highway portion of this at our next meeting with Eric. Just because without him here. I don't think it makes sense.
I did have one for the spring road maintenance.
Oh, sure.
I believe the state takes care of the roads in Glastonbury and I want to say Somerset, just because the populations are so small. So Chris Taft might have. Something to know, something about their policies for spring road maintenance. I don't know if they have anything, but I thought that might be.
That would be helpful for me because I'm supposed to be researching.
Yeah, but Chris, Chris Taft is the new, um, DTA for districts one and three, so.
Sweet.
That's really helpful. We can, we can, if there's anything else on here, um. Some of these are.
I would agree this to what currently happening pretty much.
Yeah. Trey, did you want to give us an update on the traffic study? Committee?
Yeah, or right now, we're just putting together, um. Uh. The stuff that we're going to be presenting select board with as far as, um. Guidelines for. Uh, what's it called? The ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, traffic order, new traffic ordinance for town, suggestions for it.
Hmm. So. Anything else in highway that we want to go over that we can do without Eric?
Hmm.
We're all going to be meeting again next week about the tap grant.
Yep.
Anything new on the shade tree policy? Is that still on?
One town in the whole state has done shade tree. Regulation, so it's shade trees are more like.
Yeah.
You know, we're not planting shade trees.
We have a few. Alright, well then let's keep going, general. Continued contin- continuity of operations plan.
Yeah, that's still ongoing. Christian and I came across it today. I know I have to work on it.
Are the gray ones, the ones that are current, are those the, are they, are those highlighted?
Was highlighted?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You know, like who does what and.
In terms of the auditor recommendations.
I need to sit down and maybe go yet and figure out which one of these ones we really need. Much bigger entities.
Yeah.
Um Christian and I came across a box with all of that stuff in it today and said, yeah, I need to look at these. If we're looking at some and well, this invoice for this department was here, this invoice was there, but we need to decide which ones we really need and that are helpful.
Yeah.
And not just have a policy because when we get stuck in the drawing, oh yeah, we have that policy.
Yeah.
Something that we can use.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the procedures may know we're working on, we have pieces and parts of it together, but we don't have.
Um the actually an inclusion committee. I don't have anything to report. I will report after our next meeting, feels like we might have things to talk about, because we have some projects we wanna propose. Well, we have the welcome signs, which we are still working on. And I reached out to the school to see if any of the students or the staff wanna come up with slogans for the town. But other than that, um there's a few other things, but the re- the rest of the committee will um and maybe somebody else from the committee would like to report on it since some of them attend. Um tech plan.
That's installed.
Oh, yeah. So can we cross that off?
We can, but I wanted you to see.
You wanted us to all have the satisfaction of crossing it off.
Probably it'd be nice for them to see.
Oh, we just talked about this, didn't we, Gail? The agreement?
And I talked with Brian Hill, the superintendent last week at the school board meeting. And he said it could wait till next year. They're kind of busy right now with.
Okay, and does that mean that when we host events, they're covered by their insurance or our insurance? Are they covered by insurance?
And that's what our insurance company is trying to resolve, because you
Okay.
Two insurance companies can't insure the same building.
And so if there was a and if something happened before next year.
Somebody's insurance is.
Somebody, we will be insured, it will be insured. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
That's pretty much what we got from our insurance company.
Okay, great. Housing rehab program.
That's semi annually.
When do we wanna put a date on this so we know when that's gonna happen next? When did we do it last?
We did it last.
So.
So we'll probably do it in July.
Okay, great.
After the end of the year.
Yeah. Right, um building, maintenance and repair. Town office, that grant was approved for the town office and fire department.
It was approved, we're still waiting, Kathy's waiting for some final, something rather before we can actually.
The old Creamery. We just talked about that. Yeah, um old firehouse. Did that get completed?
And we're hoping to paint some windows, I don't know if my painter is gonna come back.
I I believe so.
Okay.
One of the two painters will be back.
The painting of the windows is not something you do with the sprayer.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah. I can make sure that gets done though.
Create an ongoing annual list of yearly things to track by month.
Yeah. You have some of those instant here.
Yeah.
I haven't sat down with them to figure it out.
And even if on this, you know, things like like that housing rehab program, like we just put dates on these and then we're just like we can just know we don't have to go through that one, because it's not up until that date.
Yes.
Yeah, was that, they are. We just talked about the planning commission, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Mutual Aid.
But that's those are annual things that happen in May, you have to be done by, you should put this in April.
Yeah.
Because it has to be done by May first.
Right.
But that's an annual.
Right.
The personnel policy, usually you update the salaries of the next, next thing down, the salary ranges and participants.
And we do, which we should do that in like, not during budget time, like should we do that?
Well.
During budget.
During budget time, once the budget's passed, then we'll do a formal.
Okay, so.
And we never did figure out how to do personnel annual reviews according to the personnel policy, because it's actually written for employees and both Eric and I are elected, so.
Right, it is confusing.
We never really got.
Right, we had talked about having some sort of like just informal check in with the people who work for the town in some capacity, but we never actually followed up on that. Don't know if it's needed, but we do have some employees, so it might be something to consider having, checking in with the employees we do have, just to see how they're feeling working for the town.
Sure you want that answer?
Could be a fun conversation.
Action goes up if they, you just know your boss cares a little bit.
Just feeling like they're being.
They know you care because they get Christmas photos every year. The three guys at the dump and the road crew and the.
Yeah. Even if it was just, you know, going to their meeting with them during their work hours, something like that. Something to consider, not figure out right now. Um highway, we, the highway equipment replacement fund.
We do that in November during budget season.
And if, have you had a chance to see that spreadsheet? That we have for planning out how we.
Maybe in November?
Maybe, yeah. But it, you know, just now that we're talking about the greater, like seeing how it's planned out for or play budgeting for replacing equipment every year. Alright, annual review of town policies.
The regulations. Because we do have zoning and subdivision regulations in our ordinances, different ordinances. Your ordinances are different policies.
Yes. And are we gonna get an intern? Can we, did we apply for that again, that program?
Well, I haven't heard anything from them, so I don't know if they're still doing.
Yeah. Worth a check.
Well, the first one that we had, they don't really.
Yeah, they're not really here.
That they wanna do, be able to do for the school.
Right, which is complicated.
If I want somebody to find out the ordinances, well, if I find them all, I give them to them.
Well, maybe we can request somebody who's willing to come.
But there's somebody.
Yeah.
But I will try to check with them.
Yeah, plus it's a, you know, unique opportunity to experience the world of a town office. Alright. Anything else for that list?
Uh what we need to put on here is
For new business or? Oh, for the list. Yeah, sorry, looking at the agenda. The list, so. Okay. Oh, the RFP for the generator grant.
I have not heard from Kathy and I was trying to get one done yesterday, but I played hooky most of the day. And we need. Pretty clear, it's the two bids that we got were for twenty two KW generators. They have to put them on a little pad.
Yeah.
We have to upgrade our
Service.
Our service from one hundred to two hundred.
Right.
And then we're also gonna have them run that little thing over there, but that will be separate from.
Okay. And is there a due date for that? You need help if, I mean, I actually think.
No, I think we'll.
We're just waiting.
Once the plant sale launches.
Okay.
I'm not gonna bugger between now and Saturday.
Okay, sounds good.
And so the hill greenup is on here, and I just wanted the the board to know that they have cleaned up all the stuff except for those tires and
Yep, I will.
Still hoping that you have the number.
Yes, I'll give him, I'll I'll give that to you tonight, I have it.
As long as we're talking about Ron Hill at the last board meeting. Right. People concerned that are diving, and he said we need to put it on the agenda for tonight, but I wasn't sure in what capacity we would put that on there, so I didn't feel it.
Right.
I don't know what the slide board can do about.
There's not really much we can do about it. In adding, adding time to Justin being here in town, I'm not sure, that's the answer, because I see him every day.
Yeah.
Multiple times a day. And again, not downing Justin, but if he can't seem to pull him over.
Oh, this more hours here was not for that, that was for the speed committee might recommend. But we haven't got to that yet, but Dave Fox, we just segue here, Dave Fox, the sheriff sent a note and said, some people have been wondering about getting more hours, so it's gonna drop the contract, you know, it's gonna open up more hours now and you don't.
Has the committee.
Think you're probably gonna need some.
No, I
But that's, that's for the speed enforcement, that's what that was.
Right. Um, but like I said, I um there's some question in my mind as to how lenient Justin is being with RJ.
Do we have the power to request a different sheriff in our contract?
I know we talked at one of the other meetings about saying our expectations have changed slightly, that we want him to do more enforcement than just monitoring. Did we ever get back to him about that? Now, that's a conversation we need to have with the sheriff.
Okay.
Not the deputy, that would be something. Sheriff comes to the June meeting, we can do that. We could talk about more hours for enforcement and other issues.
Yeah, that would be great. Um, yeah, I mean, that needs to be brought up. Like I said, I wanna throw Justin under the bus, but hang out in my driveway. You will get him at some point during the day. I mean, it's not rocket science.
Yeah, I mean, beyond that, I don't know what else we. I guess that will be that will be that step.
I mean, if I'm not a cop, but knowing he has zero license and he's on the road multiple hours a day, you would think that would be kind of a priority.
Yeah.
And apparently it's not.
Right.
So the other thing to consider is in FY twenty two, we had budgeted twenty four, seven hundred for law enforcement, but we only spent seventeen, three. So it looks like there's more time that they could be here anyways.
Right.
Without this increasing the hours.
Right, with not, yeah, we're, right, there's a there's a cushion there that would, that's already budgeted for.
And I think some of that was staffing troubles, you know.
Right, splitting himself between all those towns.
Well, the sheriff had staffing troubles, finding enough deputies, it's it's spread around, so. Because it just isn't, isn't here, Justin isn't here, somebody else is supposed to be.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe worth having him come. Yeah, having him come to the June meeting, that would be love, or see if he can come to June and if not June. July.
I'm kind of hoping that the um the speed uh
Study.
Study is gonna be ready for the June meeting too.
Okay, great. We somehow oh that because we, we, we met Ron Hill, I mean anything else for Ron Hill? No, okay, so the request for the grand list extension. That okay with the two of you? Okay.
Do we need to sign the um debit card one too? Tonight?
Yeah. Can we print a new one? I use the stupid, my kid's pen, I need. I'm sorry, you don't want a gel pen signature on that, I don't think. I'll finish it then, just in case it's valid, but. Okay.
You can just write over the top of it, because I'm gonna, you're gonna scan it anyway. But I can print it in there, it's.
No, it's fine.
Are we supposed to sign in blue?
Or does, not a thing, like they can't.
Well, the red wouldn't actually. Then you know it's original.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to sign.
Well, there you go, Judy will be in charge of signing in blue.
To avoid always with signing blue, because poppies are so good now. Sometimes you can't tell the original from the.
That's true. The reappraisal proposal.
And this is the list of all the stuff he's gonna do, he's gonna create a new plan schedule and help us update the cost tables, do sales studies, he's gonna visit every property. He's not gonna go inside every house, um if he thinks he's gonna compare what we have on our cards, doing what he sees, and if he sees something different, then he wants the town listeners to go in.
Okay, great.
He's retired a couple of years ago and said, retirement's not everything I thought it was gonna be. And because the state is so shorthanded with appraisers, um some towns are now looking at twenty twenty eight.
We're looking at when?
This is, we're gonna have ours done by twenty twenty four, by next year. It's gonna work with the the listeners and the town listeners and I've worked with them on three other reappraisals, so.
Right.
A lot of the, a lot of the information we have in the cards right now is stuff that he has done, so it's.
Any questions? Be able to see them?
Oh, sure. I mean, assuming we will give notice to residents that he's gonna be. Oh, yes. It's right, we will let people know, actually, we're gonna drive down different roads. He's gonna take pictures of everything, so. Yes, he has a. He's got a white truck and there's a sign on the side of it.
Okay.
And probably.
He still might need.
In most instances, it'll be a listener or somebody.
Okay.
He won't be out there by himself.
People who know.
They'll see me coming and say.
Alright, so we feel good about this? Thank you for getting up. Thinking of him, that's great.
Yeah. Well, he thought of us too, I mean, I thought of him, but I knew he retired. But then he sent me a letter one day. Cause he's only doing it for a few of the towns that he's done in the past.
Yeah.
He doesn't wanna take on a lot of, he's been at smaller towns and he's really good at what he does.
That's great. Alright, we did the Rutland County Sheriff. Uh the Recreation Committee. Do we have, you wanna make a recreation committee?
Well, there are a few people, there are some people that wanna know what the Recreation Committee has to do before the votes are. So.
So would it be possible for the people who wanted the Recreation Committee to write up what they want, what their vision is of the Recreation Committee?
That's a good place to start.
Yeah, perfect.
Rather than you say, yeah, we had one years ago and
Yeah.
That it would help.
Yeah, just to know.
It would be nice to try to get some people that aren't on a committee right now. But we might have to call them and say, hey.
Only, I think, is interested in that.
Yeah, if they wanted to get together or write something or.
I will, I will reach out to them and see.
Okay. Um feedback forms, we have any feedback forms?
Nope.
Members' concerns. Miscellaneous correspondence or mail?
The miscellaneous correspondence in mail was, I think Jerry Johnson sent an email and said, there's this little small scale grant that might be available. And she was willing to help, but not be the lead. Yeah, I had questions about that, because it said something about line striping and I believe the state does all our class two roads, so what line striping were we thinking about, or was that just an overall part of the grant? Oh, years ago, we talked about the ones starting on the outsides, but.
All the white lines.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't know if it also might include, um, I don't know if we need them, but stop bars or yield symbols painted in the lanes. For the, like the center or over, um. East Road where that intersects.
Does the state do those? Because we thought we had to do those ourselves.
We did it once, I was, I was a resident engineer, we did it once. I think when we did the signs. But normally the state only will do the double yellows and of course the edge lines on higher class roads, but. This, if. If it's a state road, then they probably would do it, but since they're not state roads.
Right. Sherry, do you want to talk about that grant?
Um, I just didn't know if, um. Maybe marking the intersection of, you know how I've been concerned about the, the intersection of the town with that stop sign and. The markings are horrible. Um, and when I wrote the grant for the ARP, I was aware of that. Um, so I think somebody else who knows more about. Other things that would be needed because the minimum is five thousand dollars on that grant.
Okay.
Do you know what it's, Sherry?
It's due the fifteenth of June, that's why I sent it out, so if the select board wanted to apply. Um, they'd sort of have to decide now. But there's no match, it's a, you know, the state pays all of it.
Right, we would have to get some information from Eric to know.
Yeah.
Cost of things.
So do you want me to put that on the agenda for this one third?
Yeah, that would be great.
Oh, yeah, it's only May, sorry.
I know, I had the same.
It was the fifteenth, that was thrown.
Mm-hmm. All right, perfect. Thank you, Sherry. Any other mail? Executive session, any need for an executive session?
No.
No.
Our next meeting is actually.
Seventeenth.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. The select board is attending the meeting of. The CSC committee.
Right.
But we're warning it, you won't be making any decisions there, which will all be there, so we're just wanting.
Right. And the meeting will be taking place.
Meeting on Tuesday with the.
So.
Right.
They're coming then. So you guys got to meet next.
Seventeenth is the RFP meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, it's when next Wednesday is when we have to. And that meeting will all be an executive session, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
That's going over the.
That's when we're going over the, how we've graded the bids we've gotten.
Okay.
The mountains of bits with them.
And so the, there's a, a ranking sheet, we'll get to the proposals.
Okay, great.
So if you mix them up, the names are on the ranking sheets. You know, this is, he says Marble Valley.
Yeah.
And the other one says. Du Bois King.
So this is my, I guess.
Exactly, yeah. Right.
Yay.
Um, I think it's explanatory if you have a question, it can be done. This is, if you want to fill this out in paper, but we're supposed to put it on the computer. It's on the computer, I can enter it for you if you want to.
Yeah, I was going to say, you need three or just one final one?
They can just, no, each one, each individual is supposed to do it.
Okay.
And then on Wednesday, we'll discuss whether either of these meet here, meet your expectations. And then she said she tells. Money part of it.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're not happy with that, I guess you can just go to the.
At the ready list.
At the ready list and.
Mine's going to be done.
So.
So the scoring, the scoring thing is very short. It's the, you know, their proposal is long, one of them is thirty-two pages, one is thirty-seven pages. But some of that is probably resumes and this is where I graduated from and this is.
Yeah.
Things we did.
Salt San Ched, Westford, Bridgewater, so, yeah, resume stuff.
So who's driving out there to see the stuff?
Well.
Judy.
Water next week. She's going to be content on Wednesday.
And so the next thing there is. Um, on here it says Thursday, June eighth or June tenth, but it's actually June eighth. But I'm wondering if there's any way we can remove that.
What is that?
Ask that because it's graduation up here, ours is graduating.
Oh, my gosh.
Eight.
Wow.
I didn't check with. Um, Maureen to see what time, since it's a clock, it'll probably be done by seven.
Right.
But there are ten kids, there are, it's a big class.
It's not going to be done by seven.